Hello, and you're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup with me, Roisin De Cleric.
And me, Paul Brophy. Roisin, it's been nearly seven weeks since the local elections took place when people went out in the caster vote. And we're joined by two newcomers to Kilkenny County Council and one returning councillor, Michael Dyle. So joining us today is Fianna Fáil councillor for the Callan Thomastown area, Joe Sheridan. Joe Sheridan has been a community activist for well over thirty five years and was elected on the first count with one thousand nine hundred and eighty eight votes, replacing the outgoing Matt Dorn. And the other newcomer to Kilkenny County Council is Jenny Katz Slattery. Jenny was replacing the outgoing Fianna Fáil councillor Eamonn Elwards. Of course, the Elwards are well known in South Kilkenny and Jenny got elected on the fifth count. She, sorry, got elected getting the fifth, getting the fifth seat after receiving eight hundred and twenty one. Yeah, sorry, eight hundred and twelve first, first preference votes. And the seasoned councillor here, Michael Dyle, he's been a member of Kilkenny County Council for the last ten years. He's been a former mayor of Kilkenny and he's also was coherer of Kilkenny County Council as well. And only earlier last week, Michael was selected to run for Fine Gael in the general election. So you're all very welcome to today's political roundup.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Good to see you.
I suppose Jenny and Joe, I suppose you're the new kids on the block. Seven weeks, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's been a busy seven weeks. How have you found the experience of being a county councillor?
Do you want to go first, Jenny, or would I?
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Paul, thanks very much. It's been extremely busy. I knew it would be a busy time, but I probably wasn't expecting it to be as busy as it is. Look, I was fortunate, I got a good vote, so I suppose by getting that vote, I suppose you're going to get people ringing you, looking for, you know, a bit of payback maybe, you know, but it has been very interesting, I have to say. I've enjoyed it so far. I've really enjoyed it. I, as I said, I'm trying to, I have my own business as well, so trying to marry into two together can be a little bit difficult at times. But look, I suppose it just takes a little bit of time just to get into it, get to know all the people in the council and get to know how to deal with the issues that you have. So that probably takes a bit of time. So I would imagine it'll probably take a couple of months. I mean, Michael is more seasoned at this and he'd probably agree with me. It does take a little bit of time for somebody new coming in, getting the grips with it all. But I'm sure, you know, I learn fast on it and yeah, it'll be good.
Exactly. It's a, it's a big undertaking, but it must be a huge honour when you are elected to get, when your fellow citizens go out and give you, give you such a massive vote, it kind of, it must be, you know, an incredible feeling.
It is, of course. Yeah. Look, I'm very honoured and very pleased and very grateful to everyone. Look, it was, it was great water, the great rural vote, which was fantastic. You know, in around my own area, Kells, Danesport, Donegal, Stonyford, Huggenstone, all that area up as far as Waingar. I got, you know, there was an unbelievable vote that I got up around that area. So look, I suppose people do like to see somebody local. It's not all about, maybe, I don't think so, in, for the run for the council, it's not all to do with the party. I think it's more maybe the local person. As I said, look, I've been involved in so many communities, groups over the years in different villages. So that has helped, there's no doubt about it. So people, I wasn't trying to sell myself as much when I was going to the doors. People probably knew me or knew of me anyway, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And I suppose, Joe, you're a kind of a, for anybody looking to run for, for local politics, your background that you have was, you know, great because it gave you such a great base to, you know, go to work from. Because, you know, there's a lot of people, you know, that run and said, waiting to get it because there weren't no one. So but you were, you were known through your, your community involvement. So it really does stand you in good stead and I'm sure it's kind of helped you in your early days on Kilkenny County Council.
Oh, yeah, without doubt. Yeah. And sure, then I saw it was my family. My, my late dad, he was very much involved in the community and all of my family are. And then I have like a sister of mine, she's married to Fred Malsden, Stonyford, the pub, you know, the pub down in the slag. So, you know, that all helps as well because, you know, when you're, when you're, when you're, when your family around you, you know, that also helps. There's no doubt, you know. So I suppose I was blessed all around, really.
It's massive. And Jenny, you were kind, you were filling the shoes of Eamonn Elward. For the Elwards, it's a mass, it's a massive name down in, in South Kilkenny. It's, you must be absolutely delighted to be elected to the Kilkenny County Council. But I'm sure that that does come with a bit of pressure. So I'd say you were, you were relieved when you got over the line as well.
Yeah, absolutely, Paul. Like, big shoes to fill. And like you said, I had great back up with the Elwards. So didn't want to disappoint them, but I was absolutely thrilled. And like Joe said, and unlike Joe, I would be very involved in community events, groups in Mullinavat. And always have been, like, I suppose with having kids and going into clubs and that. So I was involved with the Badminton, the Camogie. I was involved in an events committee here in Mullinavat and we raised over a hundred and fifty thousand for charities and local things as well. There was only seven of us on that, but we wrote, we ran big events, like, maybe one every year for a good few years. And like that, it was probably Mullinavat got me elected. That's where I got my big vote from. Because that's where they know me in Mullinavat. I would know people in other, yeah, but I wouldn't have been active in any other really village or community. It would really have been Mullinavat. So I'm, I was very proud and very delighted to be elected and really on the bones of the Mullinavat people, I suppose. And so now my job is to get out and into the other villages and look after them. And like Joe said, I feel, I feel anyway, since I've been doing, it's a lot of learning, you have a lot to learn. And learn from the likes of Michael and Tomos Bernock is beside me here, gentleman, Pat Donkey, all those. And like, Geoffrey Frisby has been a huge support to me, you know, up there. And our new coherer, Michael McCarthy, you couldn't ask for better. He's, he's fantastic support. So yeah, look, like I said, sit back and look and listen and learn.
Exactly.
Chuck Cearl, I have to say, just pick up the phone and he's there for any advice you need or anything. They've been great. But I feel like I have loads to learn.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And Michael, you're the elder statesman of, of the, of the tree, tree here. Would you kind of share a lot of the guys' thoughts on, you know, being a new, when you're newly elected, the kind of like, it takes time to kind of find, find your feet?
Yeah, no, it definitely does, I suppose. And, and all the different committees and, and the person you need to get in contact in the council as well, you know, just to, to know where to go with, with any of your issues and your problems and that. And listen to the two lads there, it's a, it's a big decision to put your name forward first. And then it's, it's fantastic when, when you actually get elected. And I suppose they're replacing two excellent councillors in, in Eamonn and Matt. And to be fair, the Jenny and Joe there, they're going to be excellent councillors from what I've seen so far. You know, they're nice people and genuinely going to represent their areas to the best of their abilities. So they'll, they'll, they'll learn ropes pretty quick, I think, and they'll do a brilliant job. There's no, no bother.
Yeah. And this is your, this is now your third term on Kilkenny County Council. Michael, I suppose, what, what would you like to see the council kind of, you know, tackle? Or what we think would be the big issues that it's facing going, going forward? I know you're kind of with two hats, you're kind of two hats on your, your county councillor hat and you're also selected to run for Fine Gael in the next general election.
Yeah, I suppose in relation to the council, I suppose, and I'd say Joe and Jenny, they're living in similar areas. It's rural county really. And, and I would see a small bit of a squeeze coming on our funding for our roads and our, our drainage and all that. The bread and butter stuff that, that we do day to day on the ground. And people really, really appreciate getting, like, if, if you're, if you're a resident in any village across Kilkenny, rural village in Kilkenny, you're going into the same pothole for weeks and weeks and weeks and end, and it's just not being built. Getting that filled is the same as nearly getting planning permission for them because it's driving them mental. And, and like, they really appreciate it. So just rural investment is what it's all about really. And that, that is basically from filling potholes to, to larger community projects. And there needs to be more money spread out across the entire county in relation to rural investment, in my view.
Yeah, I suppose that's the biggest challenge when Kilkenny gets a pot of money. Kind of has to, you know, be divided out equally and, you know, not everywhere, you know, can, can get that. But I suppose, as you mentioned, Joe, as well, it's important to have somebody local, you know, say, in the council. Because when there's funding going for a particular project in a particular area, if you don't have somebody in your area, you know, you're going to miss out.
Yeah, look, it, it obviously definitely helps. There's no question about it, you know. But look, as councillors, I suppose, there's still, there's only so much you can do. But at least if you have a seat around the table, you know, you can put your speak in there and, and, and obviously, you know, you're obviously going to be fighting for the, your low, in around your local area as much as you can, you know. So look, everybody, every councillor is doing the similar thing, you know. But I suppose in the council, I have to be, I suppose, seem to be fair and, you know, look after everyone as best they can. But as Michael said, I mean, there's only so much in the pot, you know. So unfortunately, I suppose you'd love, you know, when people are coming looking for different, you know, there's different issues. You'd love to be able to solve all their problems, but unfortunately, it's just not possible. And I suppose with shortage of funding, you know, you're limited as well what you can, what you can get, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I suppose it's important that you, if you're honest with people, say, yeah, you won't get it this year, but maybe next year, yeah. Or, you know, or they'll do this, but they won't do that, you know. I think, I think when people are honest, I think that's important. Like, people just flaze their promise and everything and deliver nothing. People don't want that.
Oh, there's no doubt. There's absolutely no doubt, yeah.
And, and Jenny, you're actually, you're actually a special needs assistant. Boy, that's your, your day job. Do you think that kind of training and kind of working with young people in particular, do you think that's going to be useful, very helpful to you as a, as a, as a county councillor? Because I come from a teaching background myself and I kind of saw myself that an S and A can kind of, they can kind of make breakthroughs with students that teachers probably wouldn't be able to.
Yeah. Look, S and As have a different relationship with the students to the teachers. And my, my job is where I, I'm working in a vocational school in Kilkenny. And I work as, from the ASD unit, but my, my kids all access mainstream. So I'm in the mainstream most of the time, nearly all the time. So yeah, I'm with these teenagers all the time, all day, every day. It's great. And look, yeah, it gives you their perspective, I suppose, on things. And it was funny, I was very surprised when I was, put my name forward and it came out, you know, it was on the posters, started going up and it was on Facebook and things, the email to the kids that were the car, I said, I saw your one. And they, they actually knew what I was doing and they were interested, like, it was funny. And I didn't think they would have any interest, but yeah, no, they were. And I suppose as well, like, I've been so involved in, in the clubs here in Mullinavat, the Camogie Club in the Bann. I, I know all the younger people in the parish, I suppose, from that. And the events we ran, like, they would have all been involved, like, we had those, you know, the singing competitions and dancing and all that. So they would have been all involved. So I'll be, I'll be around them a lot. And yeah, I think they, they kind of said to me since I got elected, some of them have said to me, look, sure, we know you. It's great now, we know you and we can, we can talk to you and we can tell you if you want, you know, they, they feel like they can approach you.
Yeah, I think that's.
Because they've always done that. And I was in the hurling field last night and we had a, girls were playing a minor match. And, and the adults, or the female adults with the team, and they were, somebody said to me, oh, they said, oh, I didn't think we'd see you in the hurling field anymore. Now you're a councillor. And I said, but that's where I'm going to be. That's where my, because that's where everyone is like. So that's where you meet them.
And I think for local, for local elections and really for any kind of politics, when you're representing your county, either locally or nationally, it's the likability factor and it's that people know you and trust you and know that you're going to deliver for, for your constituents.
But I think it's that they can approach it. They feel that they can approach it, that, you know, and that, that they can like, and they can, I live in the middle of the village. People just knock on my door, but they're, or it's always open, actually, the doors and there's, so people just literally knock on the second door and come in. And that, my house has always been like that though. So yeah, look, and I think working with young people does give you a good understanding of, of them. But like I said, I was very surprised that they had any interest or showed any interest or knew what I was doing, to be honest with you.
Because it's interesting, I was looking through some of your election literature and one of the things you wanted to pursue if you were elected was about kind of facilities for young people as well, I suppose, you know, in rural areas, having, having those types of facilities, it's really important.
Absolutely. And for, I think as well, I'm not sure where yet we're going to go with it. But like for kids that are not into the GAA or into, you know, there are kids that are not into GAA. You know, it's a big one. And like, we don't have huge facility. Now, in Mullinavat, we're lucky, we have a fantastic community centre here now, which has a gym and it has the sports hall and it has our library. We have a lot, you know, in fairness, and we have a new walkway now at the hurling pitch. But there are areas that they don't have stuff like that and, and groups maybe set up, you know, somebody might be into drama. Let's, you know, we have one in Mullinavat actually, as it happens, but to get more young people involved in it, I think.
Yeah, and, and definitely, that's, 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 that's a, that's a big thing as well.
I think for mental health and everything, you know, they need, you know, and that is a big issue in rural areas, the mental health of teenagers and early adults, young adults.
And if the community isn't, I'm sure you all agree, you're working for the community. And when people know that they have local county, local representatives that are there for them, who will listen to them, not just hear them, but will listen and hear them as to what the real local issues are. Because you also, you're the local area, so then you also then filter up the issues up the chain to the TD, which then goes to the political party and then the dole and, and links the house and the Shannon as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. Because I remember, Michael, you saying that Fine Gael, the change of leadership, Simon Harris, one of the first things he did was put one of his advisors into a councillor's WhatsApp group. And he said, when you, when we interviewed Joe, he said that, you know, that, that was big, a big thing to do.
Yeah, it was, it was hugely beneficial to us, I suppose. And to be honest, it was beneficial for Simon Harris, I suppose, as well in that the issues when we were canvassing that, so the issues that were coming up at the doorstep was, and the concerns, they were being relayed via, via that WhatsApp group straight to the TSHU of the day, like, and, and I think he, he has had a successful enough start as TSHU because he would probably dealt with a certain few issues swiftly enough before they got out of control maybe. And, and that always comes across as positive and assertive, like, when, when you're, when you're the leader of a country. So that has helped us and it has helped him as well.
Did you notice the difference when you were all canvassing after the leadership change?
Yeah, we did indeed. Yeah. I suppose Simon Harris was straight away, he was just so energetic and that. And it kind of just gave a new lease of life and a bit of spark to, to those that would support Fine Gael anyway. They felt a little bit uplifted by, by, by the change. So that was in itself a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And as I said, you've been selected to run for, for the general election. It could be, it could be towards the end of this year, it could be, could be March. I know the latest is going to be held is, is March of next, next year, I suppose. How are you, what are your thoughts on that? And what kind of issues would you like to pursue?
Yeah, just delighted to get through the convention. I probably hadn't made my mind up soon enough, to be perfectly honest, which I saw. It was a bit of a rush, maybe starting out things for the convention and that, but delighted, honoured to be selected to have the members say, well, this guy, he wouldn't be too bad at representing us. So they were, they were happy and to put me forward. But yeah, no, it's, it's going to be a big challenge, I suppose, whether, whether it's the end of October or March. I suppose the process from now is to take out all my ducks in a row. And when it's called, just to be ready and start, start knocking on doors and, and get your, your name recognition across, across the county and hope for the best after that, I suppose.
And of course, of course, your colleague, John Paul Phelan, he's, he's, he's stepping down as a TD after, after over twenty two years between being a senator and, and, and a TD. So there's, 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 there's a big, big shoes, big shoes to fill there. But I suppose you'd be hoping that between the three, you can retain that seat.
Yeah, you would, of course, yeah. Definitely there, I suppose, political change across, definitely South Kilkenny anyway, in relation to John Paul has, has been elected in some way, shape or form for twenty five years. But there, there weren't unlikely, I'm not sure, Jenny might tell me more, but, but unlikely to be an Elward on the ticket this time, which would be the first time in over seventy years. And like, I suppose there was, from a South Kilkenny perspective, there was some sort of comfort in, in knowing you either, you either had Bobby or, or John Paul available to him at any, and they were both well gotten and nice lads. But that's not going to be the case anymore. So that, it's going to be strange for, for the South Kilkenny people to go into the booth and vote for someone new.
I have a question for the three of you. And it just came up when I was listening here. You know, you're in politics. Who would be like your, your, your political influence in politics? And who would you aspire to be or who would you go to, who, or you think you would go to for advice in politics? I'll come to you, Jenny, because, you know, we, we talked about Bob the Elwards and everything else. And you're new to politics, just like Joe. So who would, would the Elwards have been a real big political influence, especially coming from South Kilkenny?
Well, a hundred and ten percent. Liam Elward in particular would have been a huge influence on me personally. Watching him, you know, I, I remember Liam when he was at council level, like, and coming from the grassroots and where he got to, to become an MEP. And he was a fantastic councillor, TD and MEP. Like, the admiration that people, I said to him when we were canvassing at one stage, I said, you'd probably get elected if you ran now, which he probably would have, a hundred percent. And poor Bobby, God rest him, like, he would definitely be still there, whether you like. Yeah. And still go to Liam for advice all the time. He supported me, like I said already, throughout the campaign. And yeah, huge influence.
And yourself, Joe?
Likewise with Jenny, I suppose, I'd known the Elwards pretty much all my life. Bobby, I would have canvassed with Bobby, you know, for a general election and by-election. And he was great company, great guy. Likewise with Liam, another brilliant guy. And Liam actually helped me in the campaign myself, both canvassing and giving me advice. So yeah, they're, they're very good. But like, I suppose, look, I mean, I, I'll take advice of anybody, I guess, to be honest with you, you know. Like likewise with John McGinnis inside, you know, I, I'd look for advice of John. I suppose throughout the campaign, I engaged quite a bit maybe with Jack Chambers as well. He was director of elections, a local election. I found him to be an excellent guy. And a guy that would, you know, would take a call or you'd send him a message or an email or something and he would get back to you. So yeah, I suppose, I suppose, you know, whoever I get the advice off, you know, I, I, I'll take it. I won't be too choosy, to be honest with you.
And just one of our very first Irish Political Roundup video was a tribute to Bobby Elwood. And we had John Paul Phelan on, we had Kathleen Function on, we had.
Mary Fitzpatrick.
And John Coonan on. Yeah. And Michael, I tell you, in South Kilkenny, I've been very, very politically influenced by John Paul Phelan and by Phil Hogan. So that's very curious to find out, where would you, who was your political influence? And what really, who would, well, who would you aspire to even follow in those footsteps?
Yeah, no, similarly with the lads, as I said, your, your local TDs that, that would have been there before. Like John Paul, I obviously went to school with him, I have great, great relationship with him. So like, we're friends outside of politics and such and that. So if it was barren advice on how to beat the roaring steag or taller now on the hurling field, I'd, 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 I would go to John Paul. And, and to be honest, Phil Hogan as well, we, we would be good family friend of ours as well. So both of those have, have been an influence on, on my political career so far. And I'm lucky, I suppose, that I have influential neighbours, I suppose, as well. And in relation to John Bryan would have been former IFA president as well. And he's a huge help to me as well, as well as former councillor in NSD, their councillor Andy Cotrell, who, who unfortunately passed away there a number of years ago. But again, I would have, would have went to Andy for, for advice and, and help as well. So, you know, he was a gentleman.
Well, I suppose it's important to have people that you can, that you can rely on. And I'm sure, Joe, you have Matt Dorn as well there to.
Yes, I was actually just going to come back on that, Paul. Yeah. Matt was, like, Matt has been a really, I, I've been friends with Matt for, I don't know, twenty five years maybe or so. And like, Matt is a great guy. And like, as Michael said himself, he, he spent a lot of time in, in the council with him. And I mean, everybody would agree, he was probably one of the finest councillors they had. So I've learned a lot from Matt. I've sat in a lot of committees with him over the years. I've been involved in a lot of different projects with him. So I suppose I've learned a lot from Matt over the last probably fifteen years, to be honest with you. And even now, if there's, I know Matt has now, now stepped back from his role as a councillor, but he's still always there for me if I needed to ring him about a certain issue or he'd help me out with a certain issue. And then I suppose, Matt being a councillor for twenty two years, obviously, there's a lot of constituents that he would have done work for. So I suppose I'm being seen in a, in a large way. I suppose I've been seen as somebody that's maybe filling Matt's shoes. So that probably, you know, there's a workload there that I'm taking on from Matt as well. And I suppose, but, and, and that's why I'm saying Matt is a great help if I need to come back to him, you know, on a particular issue, he's there for me as well, a hundred percent.
I'd say, even though Matt is gone, retired, I'd say a lot of people coming up from, I know you're retired, but yeah. I'd say if he had a euro for every time, you know, he said that's, that's been said to him in the last few weeks, he'd probably be, he'd be a millionaire. But I'm sure he's still as busy as ever.
He is very busy, yeah. And look, he's probably more time for his family now, you know, he's, he's a lovely family. And I suppose he was always kind of on the road and gone every night. So he's a little bit more time for that. But I, I'll tell you what I definitely sensed when I was canvassing and, and Matt canvassed quite a lot with me in Callan and the Waingarb area. There was a real sense of sadness when he was stepping down from the constituents, you know, genuine, real, real sadness that, which was lovely to see, absolutely lovely to see. And I think Matt was very, I, I didn't know, I won't say taken back by it. But it was nice for him to see how much that people thought of him in the Callan Thomastown area, that's for sure. So they're big shoes to fill, that's for sure.
I was looking at your election literature, Joe, and one of the things you wanted to highlight on Kilkenny County Council was the subject of addiction, be it drugs, alcohol, gambling, you know, they're, they're big, they're big, big problems and cause, and cause big difficulties for people. In a role as a county councillor, there's, how are you going to kind of, you know, make a kind of a, an influence on that? Right. I know some of that would fall under, say, the HSE or something like that. But in, as a county councillor, I'm sure there's ways and means you can kind of, you can influence that conversation.
There is, I suppose. Look, as I said already, there's only so much you can do as a county councillor. But I suppose it does give you an opportunity to speak to people in, in, in higher powers, be it ministers, TDs, ministers, senators or whatever. So I suppose, look, I do think addiction is a, is a major problem throughout the country. And it's certainly not just drinking drugs, but I think gambling is, is a monster at the moment. And it's, 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 it's worse and worse it's going to get. And it needs to be tackled. So I suppose already I, I've spoke to, I spoke to James Brown, minister in connection with legislation and connection with gambling. And, and stuff like that is being changed. But look, I suppose, I think the thing with the likes of advertising for gambling and these free ten euro bets just to get people online, this stuff has to stop. It just has to stop, you know what I mean? And I think, I think as, as a country, you know, we've always been kind of reactive to things instead of being proactive. So look, what I can do about it is, I, I think I, what I'd like to get, maybe something up and going is more maybe education. Like to see more education in the schools, talking to kids about addiction, how it affects them, maybe get recovered addicts in. I've, I've spoke to a lot of addicts, both drink, drugs and, and, and gambling. And they all agreed with me that it's education, education, education. And, and, um, and gambling, and they all agreed with me that it's education, 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 we have to get in there and, and sort it. And, and see the dangers that's, that, 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 you know, these addictions cause to family and it's just not the. It's just not the person itself, it's their entire family and their community. Um, so I, I definitely, over my five years. You know, I'm going to do whatever I can and I guarantee you that is one of my top priorities to tackle this, you know what I mean? And I suppose as a, as a member, it's the one, it's the one committee I looked to be on was the, the alcohol and drug committee. And, uh, so look, I mean, I can't say exactly what I'm going to do at the moment. Uh, but I'm definitely going to be a strong voice to, to, um, to help tackle it, you know.
Absolutely, because I know Roisin and myself, we were chatting about.
Yeah.
And the programmes and stuff like that and the addictions and gambling came up, so that's something that we're really, we're going to, we're going to be. Be covering the next, next wave anyway.
It is, yeah, and look, I, I'm a parent to a sixteen year old and eighteen year old and a twenty one year old, you know, and thank God, we, we, they never brought a. And now it's a trouble to any of our doorstep, but it is a worry as a parent, it's a worry to every parent that's out there. Uh, when their kids, you know, to go, whatever, when they reach that kind of age and with mobile phones and devices at the moment now, you know, you're. You know, it's, it's so accessible now. When I went to school, you had to go down to the local bookies and the only thing you were gambling on, that time was maybe a now a horse race or something like that. But it's open to so much now.
Yeah, exactly. I remember watching a thing on, on like the documentary called Morrison and he said he was addicted to drugs. Alcohol, he said, but the hardest thing from the above was gambling, which I thought was, you know, really, really said it all.
Yeah, for sure.
Michael, I'm interested, you're, you're going to go for the, uh, national elections. And as you said, you know, you took your time in making your decision, oh. Is, is it too early to ask you what, uh, your political campaign or, you know, what is, what was a major decision? Factor for you to put your name forward to run for national politics?
Yeah, well, I suppose, one of the, one of the things I suppose, which I've highlighted already is. There, there isn't going to be a void in the south in relation to, uh, representation. Um, so we, we, the Fianna Gail side, and I'm sure Fianna Fáil are, are looking at, at that as well. In relation to, there needs to be a southern vice up in Dallern, um. It's, it's a huge area and it's always had with Bobby, um, or with John Paul or Liam. It always had someone representing a huge amount of people, um, and the South Kilkenny can't be, uh. Left unrepresented in Dallern, so that and I suppose. With, with a couple of meetings with, with the fellow, my fellow councillors down in the south. Uh, councillor Joel Lyons and, and Pat Dunphy and Fidelis and they. They kind of persuaded me, we put it that way, uh, to put my name forward and. With their help and support as well, uh, that, that meant a lot, so it gives me a chance, is it going to be easy? No, it's not going to be easy, but with, with a favorable wind and the caliber of people like that supporting. Um, me, there's a chance, so I said I'd, I'd give it one go before I hit retirement age.
Retirement age, only young yet.
And, and also with Kathleen Function being elected to Europe as well, that creates another vacancy, so it's probably. Carlo Kilkenny as a constituency is probably the most open, it's been in a long, long time.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's definitely going to be open, um. Uh, strange result the last time and, and in relation to. A pool, a local showing for, for Sinn Féin, um, and that happened previously in the last election as well. But they can bounce them back in the general election, so whether that happens or not, um, that's to be seen, but. At the moment, there's, there's, uh, five seats for play and, and everybody's going to be fighting hard to get one.
Definitely, yeah, yeah. And have you any whispers when the election might be?
None at all.
I, I predict, um, maybe October, November, the end of October, November.
Yeah.
Before the winter.
I suppose, like if you were sitting down discussing with people, you'd be, like you'd be saying, surely. It's sensible to have it before Christmas anyway, um. Lads are short a few bob after Christmas and the evenings are dark and the weather is bad and everybody's a bit. Down on themselves, so you'd be better off going before Christmas anyway, definitely, so that's, that'd be my. Preference, but I would say that I don't want to be dragged out into March, so.
After Christmas, when everybody's all depressed paying off the Christmas bills and, and getting the, the, and the. They say January is the highest paycheck, isn't it? Because it's the longest month from the Christmas paycheck, so. And everybody be giving off and, and everything even more so, and, um. It'd be good to have that political stability, I think, before Christmas for everybody. Of what's happening and things like that. So Jenny, you know, you are, you, you, you're a, a new candidate. And a woman in South Kilkenny in politics, so, um, you know, it's always good to have a female. Um, politician that, that people can go to, even just for women to actually go to. And I'm sure, I always say that women, the gender, um, quotas, when there's underage and everything, that. Women don't go into politics and people, women don't want to be selected just for to fill and tick the box of gender quotas. And from talking to you before we came on air, um, you know, you really are really committed to representing. Um, the people in your, in South Kilkenny. So was it a big decision for you to enter politics as a woman? Or do you see that even as a question, as a woman or a man, or do you see it as a person?
I think it's a, as a person, I, I'd hope I wasn't elected on just because I was a female, um. Um, and I don't think I was, because people know me around here anyway, they'd know me, um. No, look, I, like you said, I am, um, it's for, mine was all, when I decided, it was all about local politics. Um, and for me, I think that's all it'll ever be, Michael, we're never, we're never going any further than this. Um, uh, I, maybe naively, I'm not sure, um, I, I thought, look, we need advice, um. The Celtic County kind of can get forgotten very quickly.
Yeah.
You know, even from the council's end in the sense that there's so many councillors in the city and then, I mean. Betis Bridge, they're all very, still very close, but when you come down this far, you go past Balahay, you're down the south end of the county. Um, and we need representation up there, um, to be, you know, some people could like, even some people in Kilkenny think, oh, Moncaine, is that Waterford, Ferrybank, is that what? No, we're Kilkenny, it's all Kilkenny, um, and I just, absolutely, so I felt. When Eamon decided to step down, there was a bit of a concern around, like, we've had a councillor in Mullavash for eighty years.
Wow.
Since Liam's father was the first and then Liam, Bobby, Eamon, so like for eighty years, there's been an Edward. Councillor in the parish Mullavash, um, so like when I was canvassing, I was saying, look, I'm not an Edward, so how's this gonna go? Um, but though, look, the people were very receptive, like, as we saw, and yeah, my, my. Job going forward is to represent the people of South Kilkenny, Kilmacao, Moncaine, Pilltown, Ferrybank, Le Morsley, Row. Templeorm, all those areas, um, and of course Mullavash.
I want to, sorry for interrupting Jenny, one thing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is, um, Ferrybank is the second largest urban area outside Kilkenny City. In South Kilkenny.
Absolutely, but I do feel like it can be a little bit forgotten down this end, you know. In the sense that, you know, now obviously it's, it's, there's a lot going on in Ferrybank at the moment. An awful lot going on in Ferrybank and which is great, um, but yeah, um, it's very important to have someone and I'm, like I said. Already to Euro Jean, I'm, I, I don't think it was on the female card, but I, you know.
I don't think so too.
Some people would have said, yeah, it's great to have a woman up there as well, so yeah, maybe a little bit, but, um. I, I imagine, and I, I've so far have been treated as equal as all the men up there, they're all, everyone up there. Um, and just a word on, uh, Maria Welch, the H R in County Council, who is, um, returned, she's been fantastic. Um, well, I know probably Joe as well, but and to me as a newcomer. Like she said, there's no such thing as a stupid question. I said, Maria, I could find one, because she said, ring me, it's not a bother, anything you need. She has been a gem, um, and very supportive.
I, I remember when we were, uh, when I was training as a coach, I remember people saying, no, it's a stupid question. And I remember I trained her, but if it's a valid question to you, then it's not a stupid question, you know, if it's valid to you. But at the gender quota, I think people know when women are go, going forward. They know if they are ticking the box of a gender quota or whether they are there for, to, to represent the people. And I think reading your literature, following you on, uh, social media and speaking to you. Pre-interview and in the interview, you really represent your, your constituency with the work that you've done and. Anyone who can fundraise a hundred and fifty thousand euros for, for charity, they are really committed to their community.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm gonna go dead. Sorry, I just had a club myself.
So politics is, local politics is very different to national politics, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely, I think so.
Yeah, for sure, there's, there's, there's big differences, more of a, suppose nationally, there's more of a policy element of things, so. But I suppose people, people, whether you're national or local level politician, um. People still want to be able to trust you, engage with you.
Yeah.
And know that you're there to hear their concerns and that, that can range from, as I said at the start. The pothole to, to the larger policy issues that would bring it to national level. People just want to know that you're, you're there in the area if they have concerns and that's politics in a nutshell, for me anyway, I think.
And I suppose in Ireland, we're very, come I says, we're fortunate in one way, might be a bad in another way that. You know, your local councillor, your local T D, they're very, very, uh, accessible, whereas like we've seen people who might get elected. As in the UK, once they're elected, um, they're straight down to Westminster and you won't see them in their constituency for another five, five years, but I. I suppose you're kind of, you're on the ground and you're, you're seeing what's happening and I suppose like, you know, the national politics wouldn't. And policy wouldn't, wouldn't function without local councillors feeding into the process.
Yeah, absolutely, Paul, absolutely, the, the, whether, whether you're a, a local councillor or a T D. Um, you're expected to be at the hurling match, you're expected to be at the community meeting and you're, you're expected to do your best. Within whatever community you're in and, and that, that access is brilliant for the, for the general public to have and. Uh, long may it continue, I think.
Yeah, that's good. And, um, I suppose, Joe, I suppose another question that's, that's popping up, you're, you're working on it. Getting a pub open there in Kells, you know, Annie, have you any updates on when that might be?
Well, I tell you, people asked me what were the main issues of the doorsteps when I was canvassing and the main one was, when is the pub opening? Uh, to be honest with you, I, I bought the pub a couple of years ago, uh, I probably whipped me a heart, more me heart to me head, but, uh. I think it was, uh, look, you probably knew it, Paul, anyway, Shirley's pub in Kells, it was a lovely little pub. And it kind of tore the heart out of the village. Now, we have Seige Delaney as a pub and lovely pub in Kells as well. Uh, but look, two pubs was, worked very well, so, look, I'm working away on it, but I suppose the campaign took. An awful lot of time, an awful lot of time, so I could only do one or another, uh, you know, at any one time, so. Uh, and at the moment, I'm, after the election, obviously, there's a lot of issues that people have and you're trying to sort that out. I, I would have thought when the election was over, I'd have a breeder, but it's far from it. So, uh, but hopefully, hopefully now in the next, in the next two months, I'll get back at the pub. And, uh, you know, I, I, I'm not putting a deadline on it because I'm after doing that twice already and, uh, I can't, I'm not. I'm not gonna go down that road again, but it will open again as a pub and, uh, look, I promise I'll, I'll, I'll get it as, get it going and, uh. Have it, have it running as best I can anyway, that's for sure, you know.
Of course, your uncle has a pub in Ennisknack and your, your brother-in-law's.
Yeah, it's just round the pubs, round the, yeah, and my, and my other brother had a pub, and I have an aunt a pub, and I have a cousin have a pub, so. Yeah, there's pubs all around me, yeah, yeah.
But when you think about it, pubs, I used to watch Emmerdale, you know, but, but like. Pubs are, are the heart of the community, it's, it's not just a pub, it's a meeting place, it's where people go. Even if they don't drink, they go for coffee, they go for food or they go and it's the heart of the community, uh, just like the local shop.
It is, for sure, yeah, and it's, it's very important, it's, it's a really, it's a meeting place for people. And it's not until the pub closes, people realise, you know, how devastating it can be for a village, you know, it's not all about. Like I'm getting, I was talking earlier about addiction and here you're probably saying, there he is opening the pub, but. Like, people are better off drinking in the pub than drinking at home, because when people drink at home, you know, God knows what amount of alcohol they consume, but. I think it's very important, like, I know Michael would agree with me in this, like you take in a steag and. Best, I remember the likes of the steag, you know, and you had, you know, you had five pubs and then a steag, you know, that kind of a thing and, you know. These, these buildings are, are, are fierce and important, I suppose, for villages to keep communities together and. That's where the local chit chat is and people, you know, you have elderly people even living on their own, it was like their sit room to. Many respects, you know, so I do think it's good, and it's not because I, I have the pub myself, it was somebody else that had to buy that pub. Uh, day one, I would have been equally delighted, you know, it was our fear as a community that it was going to be actually sold and the licence was gone out of it. And that would be an end of story as a pub ever again, so, uh, that's why I say I probably bought it with. My heart, you know, as well as my head, you know, that kind of a thing, so, yeah, I, I agree, I think it's, it, it can play a, a very important role. In, in the community, without doubt.
And we need lo- local leaders like yourselves, we need local people who people trust and know. To actually represent us at local level and they'll feed up the channel to the, uh, to the other channels between the T D, the senators. And to the political parties, we need the people that we can, we know and trust. That's really, really important, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I, I think it is, I think people probably see us as councillors, you see it probably as a, maybe a link between them. And your T Ds and senators and ministers and stuff like that, so, yeah, I think it's important, I don't think people can trust you. Uh, rely on you, you know, you have to be, you know, and you have to be seen to, to act on, on queries. I think if you're just taking calls and then just acknowledging, you, you, you know, the, 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 the queries people have. I don't think it's good enough and I don't think people accept that anymore. I think you do have to be seen to take it further and absolutely do whatever you can. To help people out, but unfortunately, there's lots of the queries people have and like God above couldn't, you know. Solve some of the problems, you know, that you have and, and, and you do get quite a few of them, but. I suppose you have to be just honest with people and if it's not doable, it's just not doable, don't lead them up a garden path and tell them, oh yeah, I'll see what I can do, I might be able to get that done for you. When there's not a bloody hope in hell, you know, that kind of a thing, so, yeah, honesty is, uh, uh, I think honesty is number one, I think, yeah, yeah, and be seen to do your best for them.
And that's honesty with integrity, when you just tell them up street and that, that, that is your character and that's your reputation. And that's what people want, even if they, they, the, the, what you tell them is what they don't want to hear, at least they know. That they, if you go to them, you're gonna tell them it's not doable, it's not workable, or it won't work, it's, it's that honesty with integrity.
Correct.
Paul, any more questions or anything else, anybody else would like to share with the, the viewers? You, you're all new to the channel apart from, uh, from up at the count, so we were delighted to have you on and we wanted to have you on and. Everybody was all busy before, out canvassing and everything before the, um, elections and. As Paul said, it's seven weeks since the election and it seems only like a blink of an eye, we're all up at the camp centre.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah, and no doubt, Michael, we'll be having you on again in the run up to the, uh, national elections, talking about different issues. And campaigning as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that and, uh, hopefully, uh, you won't grill as, as hard as today.
Honestly, politicians love a good grilling, they love to be able to answer the questions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But you know, and as we said, uh, Joe, we said, uh, Michael, we said to, um, Joe Sheridan and, uh. Jenny Slattery earlier on before you came on, you know, if there's any issues or anything that you want, uh, to discuss or, or highlight. Or put the floodlights on, definitely, please do get in touch with us.
Yeah, no problem at all, yeah, appreciate that, yeah.
We, we appreciate you all, um, taking your time, uh, this afternoon to, to, to chat, to chat with us, it's, it's interesting to get a site into. Insight into what's life like as a, as a county councillor, particularly in kind of rural areas where, where, where your majority are. Where you're all based, so, um, from Roisin and myself, I said, thanks very much for, for chatting with us this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.